Good night, good night, we have treats.
And I think it's so funny that we leave the name tag on there, or name tag on them, and there'll be different missions putting here, and I'm like, what?
Well, we have another set here for the plan commission.
Yeah, the plan commission, but no one else. I forget what, oh, the original transportation unit is here.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the December 18th, 2017 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. We do have several special guests in the audience tonight, and we are blessed to have with us the junior girl scouts from Crystal Lons Troop 71045 here tonight. So I'm going to ask everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I would ask that the girls get in place, and then I am going to join them, and they are going to, the girl scouts are going to lead us tonight with the pledge. So everybody just hang on for one second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Here.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Sclaire.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colde Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Tom Inman.
And I would ask to deviate from the agenda tonight with our special guests here tonight. They are here to observe the meeting as part of their responsibilities and to earn their government badge, so they will stay for the entire meeting, and they will probably have some questions for all of us when it comes time to public comment. But I would ask that the troop leader, Mrs. Dean, please come to the podium, and she can certainly introduce each one of the young ladies, and tell us a little bit about Junior Girl Scout Troop 71045.
Thank you, Mayor. So my name is Sarah Dean, and our girl scout troop is at Crystal Lons. We've been together since second grade. So we have Reagan, Samantha, Addison, Kaylee, Avery, and Sydney in our front row, and over here we have Jackie and Thalia, Brianna and Delilah, and Miranda, Alana, Kate and Stephanie. With girl scouts, we learn a lot about different things. Right now, we're working on our government badge, so part of the badge is to talk to an elected official, come to a city council meeting. We talked about government at several of our meetings. So the girls, through girl scouts, have given, been given the chance to go camping and learn different outdoor skills and other skills that, so that way, when they're older, they can decide what they want to do, and it gives them a little sampling of all sorts of fun things, from crafts all the way up to extreme things, like we went, did archery and canoeing, all sorts of fun things that we get to experience. So thank you for letting us come and observe today.
And they were here early, and the young ladies were in my office, and I answered a lot of questions. We'll keep that amongst ourselves, right, Miranda? With the questions? And so, so I will say that, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to say it publicly, that what you're going to see tonight, you're going to see part of the Christmas season is about giving back, and it's about sharing. So you're going to see some prime examples tonight of giving back to the community, to certain organizations that need some monetary help. So you're going to see government in action, and some of it will be very easy, and some of it will be very hard. And there'll probably be some that have discussions and some that don't. But that's all what good government is about. Like we talked in my office, it's about negotiations, it's about compromise. But I want everybody to remember, because I do say this publicly, that I am a firm believer that good things happen to good people. So if you study hard in school, if you listen to your parents, to your grandparents, and if you stay good people, good things will happen to you as you grow older throughout your entire life. And we also talked about having goals in your life, that everybody, even when you're old, like me, you have to have goals, okay? And you may not always reach those goals, but you have to have something to thrive for and to reach for. And when you reach that goal, you need to pick another goal. And it's okay to have five or 10 goals, and to work on them throughout your entire life, okay? So stay good as you are now, listen to your teachers, listen to your parents, and stay good people, and good things will happen to you as you get older, okay? So now we're going to move on to some special presentations also. And this is a prime, this is a prime example of government working together, with the city working together with one of our businesses in the city of Crest Hill. And back in September, one of our businesses, Cottonwood Farms, that has all of the Halloween, the pumpkins and the haunted house, and the mazes and everything else, they are in the city of Crest Hill. And we worked with them, and city council agreed to give them six one-day liquor licenses for the weekends at the farm. And what the Cottonwood Farms, the Siegel family has done is they want to give money back now to the profit that they made off of those sales during the weekends, to three very reputable organizations in and around the Crest Hill area, the Crest Hill Lions Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, and to the Will County Children's Advocacy Center. So with that, I'm going to call Paul Siegel and Katie to the podium for their presentation. And, and you are going to see now the prime example of a business giving back to the community and giving back to certain organizations, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and city council for letting us come tonight. It is indeed a privilege to be able to give back. We've made a, a, a promise to the community that we would continue to do that. We started off our season, as we have for many years, with free admission for first responders and military. And this year, we're glad to say that we served about 3,000 people in those two categories, the first two weekends that we were open, where they were allowed to come with their families, to just have good, clean family fun, with, with no cost to them to get in. So we started off giving back to those that had given so much to us, between the military, both active duty, and the veterans, like, like Tom up here, as well as to the first responders that are, are still giving every day, putting their lives on, on the line, running towards the fire instead of away, or running towards the gunfire instead of away, in the case of a police officer. So we're very proud to do that. And as the mayor said, we came wanting to have a couple of liquor days of liquor licenses so we could sell beer and wine at the farm, so that we could benefit some worthwhile charities. It was really a task to figure out which of the charities, many worthwhile charities we have in and around Crest Hill, we give to. But as the mayor said, we, we did agree that we were give to the Child Advocacy Center, Big Brothers Big Sisters, and the Crest Hill Lions Club. So tonight, we have checks for those organizations, and we also brought some pies. Most of the city council has eaten some of our pies, because we brought them to you before. But it's Christmas season, we still bake pies, we still taking orders for people that want us to do the baking for you. So you can call the farm and, and order those for pickup on Friday and Saturday, or Saturday and Sunday, I should say, yet, yet for Christmas. But as a little way of saying thank you to the volunteers that came out to take care of the customers for the beer and wine sales, we're going to give them a, a pie to take back to, to their organizations, if they have a little Christmas party, that they'll have a little bit of something to nibble on that I think they'll kind of like. So I'm going to let Katie, our, our daughter, fourth generation at Cottonwood Farms, give out those checks.
For the Crest Hill Lions Club, Mayor and Nate.
President's over in the corner there.
That's for you. Enjoy, and thank you.
My name's Jason Doish, I am the president of the Crest Hill Lions Club, and once again, I'd like to thank you for giving us that opportunity to help you guys out and also raise some money. We do a lot of stuff within the community. As most of you know, we do a lot with hearing and vision. We also do a lot, we just did a major donation to the food bank, local food bank here, so like I said, we're going to keep continuing to serve the community, and with your help, we can do that even further, so thank you very much.
See how hard you guys work.
So the check was for $1,900.
We like the Lions Club, because we know we're not just giving it to them, for them to party with, whatever. We know that all the money they raise, they give to somebody else, and they help us find other worthy causes, people that, that are in need. There's always somebody that needs more than what we do, and so by giving to them, we're helping them to give to others. So it's kind of like a, a twofer, that we're not giving to a one organization that they are in hand going to multiply the fish, if you will, and, and give it to others. So we're very glad that you guys, you had a great day, or a great couple of days, you had some very hardworking, John Dean was really hustling to run the register and, and take care of people, so we're glad that we can help you as much as so you can help others.
Thank you very much.
Next one's for Big Brothers Big Sisters.
Hi, I'm Mike Traptan, CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters. I know many of you, I had a chance to work with a lot of you when I was the chief of Police de Juilliard, so a great working relationship. You got a great chief here, do a little plug for Ed. But really, the Siegel family, thank you so much for what you've done for us, for Big Brothers Big Sisters, Mayor, City Crest Hill for always keeping us in mind. You know, the kids in our organization don't have a whole lot, and when someone like the Siegel family reaches out to you and wants to help your kids, it's, it's personal, it means a lot, and I can't thank you again for all you guys have done for our kids. Thank you.
And you were very well represented with, with volunteers. That's a sign of a strong organization and a strong leader. There was no shortage of people. Mike was there himself, but he led by example, and like the Lions have quite a few volunteers. Mike, Mike was there, and he had quite a number of volunteers, so it's not just a one-person or a two-person effort. In his case, it's many people helping, many boys and girls that need the help, and so we were glad to give a little helping hand so they can maybe help a few more kids and make their days, make, maybe make their Christmases just a little bit better. So thank you for what you do too, Mike, we appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
The next one's for child advocacy.
Hi, my name's Lorraine Groo, new mayor. I am a social worker, AKA therapist, at the Will County Children's Advocacy Center, which is the non-for-profit branch of the state's attorney's office, the Will County State's Attorney. I like going after Mike Traptan, because I used to work where he works. I was a social worker there at Big Brothers Big Sisters. And somebody can wink at me, because I talk a lot. I just wanted to say real quick, first of all, tonight was one, probably one of my most difficult nights I've ever actually had, working for the state's attorney's office. I had to share with a parent that did not know that their child had been abused, and this parent broke down and pell to his knees in front of me, and he held my hand, and, and so that was difficult for me. I, I see this kind of a lot, but usually they don't fall in front of me, and I'm not alone, usually there's a team with me, because I work with the police department, the state's attorney's office, and all their social workers. I love my job, and I come from a family, a big family, and there was a, unfortunately, what we, what we do at the Child Add Center is we help children and families that have been sexually abused and/or severely physically abused. And I, I, I know what that's about, and it took me an entire lifetime of social working myself and getting therapy to work through that. So it's a blessing, I think, that God prepared me for, to be able to do what I do. And it took a lot of mentors and people that work with organizations like Big Brothers Big Sisters to help me become a social worker and where I'm at today. So I'm so glad and grateful for the Siegel family for helping out, reaching out to the community, because it takes all of us to help children just get through life sometimes. So thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart, and for the children, the families that we all work with. With that said, this is going to help a whole lot of children, and, again, I talk a lot, so I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I looked at this check, there's some fuzzy math, there's way more than we deserve, so I think you guys paid the account, so thank you so much. Wonderful.
If you know these a lot, you know why we took this little bit.
All right, thank you. Everybody have a good Christmas.
Okay, with that, we have other special guests in here tonight.
It's our annual Holiday Lights contest to announce the winner, so I'm going to turn it over to the events committee, Alderwoman Oberlin and Alderman Albert, for the presentation.
Well, once again, this is one of my favorite meetings, not only because my little girl scout friends are here, but because we get to give out the winners in the Holiday Lights contest, which is always a fun event. I want to thank all the people who entered this year, I want to thank all the secret elves who did the judging, and then we're going to start with our fifth place winner, Michael Russell, 1945 Civil Drive. Is Michael here?
Yep.
You hang on to that, you hang on, that's a special one. So you win a $30 gift certificate for AJ's, Tenera Street in Crest Hill, and this lovely bag that my company donated, filled with goodies, all kinds of goodies, plus there is a menu from everyone that, ooh, hi there, there's candy in there too, so you can have that, all right? Menus from all the lovely restaurants who are participating in this, and congratulations, you live on these sides, so it's definitely adorable, I love the big snow globe. You did a good job. She just wants the candy. Thank you. All the other cookies. Our fourth place winner is Bob Rosovich. You and your family get $40 gift certificate for pizzas by Marchionni right here in Rayner and Theodore Presto, and also a goodie bag filled with the same lovely treats, candy. You guys did a great job, I want to thank you for entering. Thank you. You like cheese? You'll like it long, remember that next year, okay? But candy and cheese. Congratulations. Now, I don't believe Mr. Scheible's here, he had a family emergency Jan just told me about, but our third place winner is Richard Scheible, 2112 Lynwood Street in Crest Hill, and we will get this to him, I'm terribly sorry that he couldn't be here, but he won a $50 gift certificate from Mariska's Restaurant in Crest Hill, so. Then our, ooh, we're getting to the top. Our second place winner is Pam and Mike Streisig, 2301 Green Street. Ooh, there's Pam, hi. You won a $75 gift certificate for Hova, so looking to do some more home improvement? And there is your bag of goodies. Congratulations, thank you for entering. You're welcome. And then ta-da, our first place winner, Eva and James Fugling, am I saying it correct? Oh, I'm not saying it correct. Congrats. And you know what you won? You won a $100 gift card for Food for Less. And a little bag full of goodies and candy, and great job, first place, thank you. Then I do have to comment that our secret elves all told me the same thing when they were out doing this this year, that they thought that Nate's house was so beautiful, and he couldn't enter it, so Nate did it for you. We have a few extra coupons here from Scott at Marchionni, so if anybody wants to help themselves, I'm going to put them on the table, he asked me to pass them out tonight. So thank you again, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
I was just gonna, I was also going to thank everybody for entering this year, we had 11 entries into the, the lighting contest, and there's several more that should have been entered, just driving through town, so, you know, next year, we'll try to get the word out a little more so people can enter, but I was, I was talking to the gentleman in the back there, it takes a tremendous amount of work to, to do some of the homemade things that he did, so he definitely deserves the first place prize, so congratulations. Thank you.
And I would just like to say thanks to our, congratulations to all of the winners, and congratulations to all the people in Crest Hill that have decorated their homes this year. We had some great weather in November, which made it a little bit easier, but when you drive around, you see a lot of the decorations throughout the city, it looks very festive for the Christmas season, and it looks very nice when you do drive around. To the five that were here this evening, congratulations to you for all your hard work, because I, I live close by to the first place winner, and I seen how much time he invested just putting the decorations up, and, you know, when I ride around, I, I know it's very time-consuming, but I think there's a lot of gratification that when you turn the lights on and you see people stop in front of your house and take a look. So congratulations to each and every one.
Mayor, one more.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to make one more comment too, for, for Bob sitting over there in the corner, he, he does an awesome Halloween display as well.
Yeah.
If you get a chance to go by on Halloween, it's, it's, it may surpass your Christmas display.
I forgot to give the address for our first place winner, it's 1700 Clement Street, and we'll put all these up on the scroll so that you can go visit them shortly. Thank you.
Let's do a Halloween contest.
I'll get right on that in my spare time, okay?
Okay, we are going to go back to the agenda items, but first we have the minutes from the December 4th, 2017 Crest Hill City Council meeting, motion would be in order. Second. We have motion by Alderwoman Sclaire, seconded by Alderman Colde Pietro, for the approval of the December 4th minutes, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is our city attorney, we have Chris Spasha with us this evening from Spation Airs. Any comments, Chris?
No comments tonight, it's, it's good to be here. Happy I can show up to one of these meetings, I guess.
Thanks for the chocolate. Yes, thanks for the chocolate.
Any questions of city attorney?
Membership for the gym comes with us?
Yeah.
No?
You can walk it off.
Okay, next is our Assistant City Administrator, HR Director, Megan Filera. Good evening, Megan.
Good evening, thank you. Mayor and council, before you this evening is a resolution formally recognizing the city of Crest Hill sexual harassment policy. This came about in response to Public Act 1000554, was discussed at our work session, and now is an opportunity for you to formally recognize this.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verche, questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1762. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's listed as a resolution. Oh, once, I'm sorry, 1003.
Oh, next item, I didn't, sorry. The next item we have is an ordinance modifying the city of Crest Hill, code of ordinance says eliminating the licensing of restaurant businesses. If you recall at our last work session, we discussed the duplicity of licensing businesses who also operate as restaurants. Before you, it was an ordinance that would codify the discussion and means to eliminate the licensing of restaurant businesses.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, questions or comments in regards to the city business licenses? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number is 1762 on that.
Anything else, Megan?
Nope, that'll be out for now.
Okay, any questions of Assistant City Administrator? Thank you, Megan. Moving on, Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Tony Terres, good evening, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As discussed at our last work sessions, I have two items for your approval this evening. First one being the Elrose Court Facility fencing, adding privacy slats to that existing cyclone fence. As discussed, this is the best, most cost-effective option in providing screening to that facility. We, as a staff, request approval to move forward with installation of this product.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, in regards to the Elrose Court fencing, questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Yes, we get ahold of the residents there and see what they had to say about it.
Yes, Mr. Pope, we distributed letters, and they were also informed of the prior work session meetings and this evening's work session, or, excuse me, this evening's council as well.
They went along with the slats and not the solid fence?
Pardon me?
I thought we talked about a solid fence all the way across there, not slats enough?
No.
No, we discussed the three options, and council wanted to move forward with the new type of feathered, what they call feathered vinyl slating. It's the most cost-effective alternative to doing a solid vinyl or a decorative iron slash aluminum security fence.
This is what we decided at last meeting, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, but the residents did get to look at the product, because I know Greg said he was going to go to the residents and show them the product so they could see it, and I'm just wondering, did he get ahold of them? Were they able to see it, and are they good with it?
As far as I understand, yes. I also brought a couple of the other samples that were here. The only color that is not here is the dove gray, or the, what they call a putty gray, which is also, I added a photograph there on the tabletop, so if anybody cares to...
Tony is right there, the resident, she's holding out her hand.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Tony, tell you.
So these are the, like I said, these are the products that they have as colored options. They have multiple other colors. I believe that the council at the work session had recommended and decided on doing the dove gray or the putty gray. That way, it blends with the existing cyclone galvanized iron, existing fence that's in place right now.
Any, let me, any other questions of city staff first? We did discuss this last Monday night at the work session, the residents were invited, I don't believe any of them showed up. Last time, any other questions from city council?
I'll just mention, Mayor, you know, when we did discuss this at the work session, I think we have to be mindful of the amount of cost associated with tearing down an existing fence and putting up a brand, another brand-new fence. We have to be, you know, cost, cost-effective, and I, and I think that's why we decided to go this route. It's a clean, nice look, and it's, it saves us, saves the city, the taxpayers, a tremendous amount of money by doing it this way. That's my comments on that.
Okay.
But you have to remember one thing, though, when a cycle sets up there for a number of years, it's rushed, and it ain't going to look pretty when it rushes.
I think maybe then we can, at least my opinion, as we could address that as, as we get there. But if we start a precedent like this, I think we might run into situations where anybody that lives by city-owned property could be asking for a very expensive privacy fence, and what's to, to, how could we say no? My mother backs up to city-owned property. where anybody that lives by city-owned property could be asking for a very expensive privacy fence and what's to, to, how could we say no? My mother backs up to city-owned property. They've wanted a fence around the retention pond for years. I mean, the city just doesn't have the funds to put up new fences all over city-owned property. Again, it's just my opinion. This is a nice, nice-looking privacy slats. It doesn't vibrate in the wind, according to Tony. So, I think it's, I believe it's the best route to go.
On another note, mayor and council, we do have a couple other leads with another vendor that has, is able to provide the same product at hopefully a lesser cost. So, I should know that by the end of this week.
Okay, anybody else at council level?
No, I just want to like pretty much echo with what Nate said. And I'm kind of surprised because we had this discussion in open work session. I didn't see any of the resident and it seems like the aldermen were okay with it. So, I don't know.
No, we had asked that they be contacted so they could give more, let us know their feelings.
Well, again, this is taxpayer money and we're trying to make the best decision to make everybody happy. And I think it's a really nice, clean, you know, product. And, but again, it's your words, but...
My, my only concern, Tony, is, and I don't know because you said there's other companies that do it, might be less, I just hope that the product is...
It's a technical site.
Yeah, not, not, not a cheaper, flimsy or...
It's the same product.
Well, it's going to be woven into the slats.
Hang on, Phyllis, please. The discussion is at this table for right now.
And because I don't want it to run into the issues that the metal does with the noise and the bending and the, you know, when the wind...
These are specifically designed to...
No, I know, but you had said another company. That was my only concern.
No, we, we asked for the exact same product.
Okay, that, that's wonderful. And I, I would have to agree with everything that Nate said because this is, this is a large area. And I think that from the photographs we've shown and the product that we've shown, this is a very, I'm sure everybody's not gonna be thrilled, but I think it's a good, a happy medium. I think cost-wise and everything else. And that's what we agreed on, once again.
Okay, Phyllis, if you'd like to say anything, you need to come to the podium. State your name for the record. Address is optional and you're free to say whatever you'd like before the vote.
My name is Phyllis Townsend. And this piece of material you're gonna weave through the fence, right? Is this gonna be weaved through those?
Yes.
There are, there are...
And it's gonna be, is, is this actually a piece that is going to be weaved? Is this what they're going to put in to hold it for support?
No, they have some tie-downs that go along with that as well.
And this little wing thing that's on here, is this going to be shown at your end so that our end is not going to see how this ties in?
Any, any visual that would be shown would be on the private or on the public...
So, you're telling me any of this piping that is on here will not...
No, no, the piping is part of the fence.
Part of the fence.
If you're looking...
So, it's gonna be on our side?
Yes, there's no cover for the pole.
So, it's gonna look like it's hanging in there like it's got...
I can't, I can't see that from here, ma'am. I can...
Phyllis, there's also a picture right there on the table that might help understand it.
Yeah, you can see it here, too. So, is this going to be, what is this?
That is the existing cyclone.
That's our existing cyclone. So, you're gonna have this...
You're gonna see it on both sides. It's not going, it's not a solid screen.
So, you're gonna put this against this with all of this being seen like that?
Need to go back to the podium for the microphone.
And I see on here there's a disclaimer for the wind. So, if we have a problem here, it says we will not be responsible for fence damage resulting from wind.
If there's damage to, if there's damage to that, any of those slats, okay, they will be replaced.
Okay. So, anyway, I talked to my neighbors. I happened to be out of town the day you were gonna do this and I did not have enough time to cancel what I was doing. And my neighbors in Florida. And when we first came to this, I thought we were going to do this in the spring. We were kind of waiting till then, till, and then we got more, like you say, bids. I don't even know what the other bids are or who the other companies are. And is this the name of this company that is going to put this in, this Filtrona?
No, it is not.
Then who is it?
We have not, we are not having decided on who that installer's gonna be. As I, as I mentioned earlier, we have a couple more leads for the exact same product. At, my understanding is that they can provide that same product at a lesser cost, installation cost. So, that would be additional savings to the city and the residents on, on the expense of that installation. That is just a brochure for the product itself. That's one of the manufacturers.
So, we really, is there any place we could see a fence like this that's already put up?
I can find out from the vendors when they, when I speak with them to see if they have anything nearby that they can, you know, you can go and visit.
Mm-hmm. Because I would like to see this fence when it's up and see how it weaves through the cyclone fence. And you are taking down the barbed wire, right?
I thought at the, the first work session that you were here, you, you were the one that said, "I don't have a problem with the barbed wire."
No, I told you I want the barbed wire gone. That was the first thing we even discussed to begin with, gone.
I'm not talking last Monday. I'm talking a month ago.
Wait a long time ago.
I thought every, the four residents that were here, they were all in favor that the barbed wire was okay. It's a brand-new fence.
No, no, my neighbors never said the barbed wire was okay, never. I wouldn't have said barbed wires.
Well, I'm sorry you couldn't be here last Monday, but you were given notice as lo, as well as all the other neighbors were given notice and nobody showed up. So, we did have plenty of discussion last Monday night in regards to this issue.
This wasn't supposed to be...
It's a brand-new fence. And I, I think we're gonna hear from the director here in a few minutes that awards have already been won for what we have done there. And...
How far off were the other bids?
I don't have them in front of me right now because council had decided last Monday night to go this route.
Probably anywhere from 75 to 50 percent.
So, you're talking $8,000 for this fence? And if you have 75 to 50 percent, you're talking?
You're something decorative like that. Anywhere with 16,000 to 10,000. And like I said, we're waiting on another quote that could be less than that for the same product.
So, if this fence goes up and we see all of this, you're gonna see the barbed wire above it? Is that it?
Yes.
So, you're gonna see the barbed wire with this nice fence?
The barbed wire, the barbed wire hanging off towards the property.
You're gonna see a barbed wire over top of that fence just like I do now.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna see barbed wire. That ain't gonna be a nice fence, a barbed wire fence. I didn't think we could have a barbed wire fence in the city. And besides, we just said the EVA or what was it, said that we didn't have to have a barbed wire fence anymore.
Okay. Would you like to make any other comments because I'm gonna ask for a motion?
No, not right now. But I just, you know, I'm not happy until I at least see this fence.
Right. I understand you're not happy. I get it. I understand it. We have to do what we think is in the best interest of the entire city.
Okay, well, then we'll have to go from here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I already made a motion, mayor.
Oh, you did?
I have a motion by Mr. Albert, a second by Claudia Gazal.
Any questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to see this table and wait a little bit.
Since it doesn't have to be done right away.
I will ask the motioner in the second if they would like to change their motion.
I'll just make the comment that we've had a lot of discussion on a fence. So, I'd like to move forward with it tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
No.
Clud, I'm sorry, Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
John Verche?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Anything else, Tony?
Subsequently, we also spoke about the professional engineering services, the manhole rehab. We are looking to contract with Robinson Engineering. They're very familiar with our sanitary collection system. This is all part of the trying to improve the INI problem in the city. And we would like to have approval and would like to recommend REL to help us with engineering and technical oversight of this project. And it's not to exceed the $52,000, $52,200 for those services. That is for reconditioning of approximately 107 to 109 manholes that we know have serious infiltration, stormwater into our sanitary system.
Again, we discussed this in length last Monday night at the work session. Also...
So moved, mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin for the professional engineering services, the manhole rehabilitation with Robinson Engineering. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just a couple informational items, mayor and council. The Gaylord and Division Street intersection traffic signals were activated this morning. They are up and running. The street lamps are also functioning. The temporary signage has been removed. Restoration of that intersection will commence as soon as the weather breaks in spring. And I'd like to also thank the two officers that assisted us with traffic control. If Chief Clark would extend that appreciation to them. Thank you. The other item as informational is that we are a member of the American Public Works Association, Chicago Chapter Metro. Our branch is called the Southwest Branch. It encompasses mostly all of Will County. We submitted two applications for projects this year. They give out awards for special engineering projects. We are going to be receiving and recognized for the Route 53 BiDOT project that took a couple of years to get off the ground, but it was completed this year. We had assistance, of course, through REL, Robinson's Engineering, supported that, some of those engineering services to us. I also would like to thank Mr. Greg Coke for spearheading that. I know there was a lot of work in the background petitioning with IDOT to get that project done. And then the other project is for an environmental project. That was for the Well 7 project, the installation of a new well and cleaning up that whole entire facility and adding some storm retention to that location as well. And that was through support and engineering services from Strand Associates. So, I'd just like to say thank you to the council and for their support in these projects. And it's paid off. And again, we look forward to receiving those awards in January of 2018. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Public Works?
Yeah, Charlie, Tony, you said when they put the final coat in the underpass, they didn't have to paint it because that undercoat on top there was gonna look white paint. That thing just ugly as look of white paint I ever seen. It's like, it's put a lot of dirt in it when you put it on then.
No, we did not.
That thing is not bright underneath there.
We did not select the white. We selected that concrete, we wanted to match the existing wall to the southeast. And that was the color. I brought in three different colors and council selected the, the concrete, what they call a shotcrete.
Correct. But you also said it's gonna be very bright underneath there, too. It is not bright.
There's hardly any light in that, in that area.
They put two lights underneath there, two sodium lights. They should've put mercury lights underneath there. Sodium doesn't control a lot of light.
That's, that's IDOT state route. We cannot do anything, we cannot add any signage or any lighting to that BiDOT without IDOT approval.
Looks terrible.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Tony.
You're welcome, mayor.
Moving on to Community Development Department, our Economic Development Director, Scott McMasters. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, mayor and council. No agenda items this evening. I do have a few noteworthy items for the city of Crest Hill. Britson Mini Figs is the new Lego resale store now located at 20649 Renwick. And they'll be holding their grand opening on Saturday, January 6th. Bay's Investment Corporation has purchased the Cressley Commons Building at 1611-43 Weber Road. You may have seen trucks there in the last couple of weeks. They're currently renovating that building and marketing it to new tenants. So, hopefully within the next few weeks, it'll be a little more full. I think there's four tenants in there now. I think they have a couple of others in lease negotiations. And then South Weber Plaza was recently purchased by a new investment group. They're working on new tenants and they're keeping the existing one, Southern Cafe, 12 handles and fire water. And on another note, the November code enforcement and permit fees report are both on file. And that is all I have.
Okay, any questions of Economic Development?
Hey, Scott, there's a, on your report, your code enforcement report, there's a couple that are on there that don't have addresses. It just says the bank trust name and it says Caton Farm Road. Just, if you could just track down the address, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that and speak with Kirk and get us an answer.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Moving on, Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, mayor and council. I have this evening on the agenda, a request for no parking sign in 1600 block of Kelly Avenue, Kelly and Theodore on the east side. For our discussion at work session, I photographed the area, spoke to local business there. And I think it's just gonna allow for easier travel coming off of Theodore and ease of congestion in that area. So, I'll be looking for approval for that signage.
Motion to compare what your...
Second it.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments in regards to the no parking sign 1600 block of Kelly? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd also like to remind residents that Crest Hill Police will be conducting extra patrols over the holiday season for especially impaired driving. So, we'll be out there and we're gonna be out there in force. I also would entertain any questions.
I will, I won't speak to you after the meeting about it, but I have an incident a resident has inquired about. So, we'll talk to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else, questions? Thanks, chief. Thank you. Moving on to mayor's report. You have before you an ordinance abating the taxes levied for the year 2017 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds. Alternative revenue source senior lien, Series 2010, Build America Bonds, direct payment to issuer of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. This was also discussed at last Monday night's work session. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Sclaire, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments into the abatement of the taxes?
So, this is just for us to pay the interest on the bonds, right?
This is actually to abate, we have to abate the taxes on the bonds. We do not levy for them. So, that's why we have to actually abate that, that levy taxable amount because the water and sewers is self-sufficient fund. We have to abate the taxes. Therefore, the burden is not passed on to the taxpayers in their property taxes. This is, that's the purpose of this ordinance.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1763.
Okay, next on the agenda is an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018 for the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. I will tell you that our property tax levy for 2017, the city of Crest Hill, was at 60 cents. There are 37 municipalities in Will County. When you rank those, we are number 17. The fact that we do give you back the 25 percent on your municipal portion of your tax bill actually would put us ranked number 12 out of 37 communities for our property taxes. For levy for 2017, the estimated total property taxes to be leveled for 2017 are $2,163,920. I will give you a breakdown. The general corporate fund would be $1,500,000. The police pension fund, $623,920. The total tax levy for all funds, again, is $2,163,920. Again, this was discussed in length at last Monday night's work session. Our financial supervisor, Ashley Mottikas, here. Ashley, would you like to add anything in regards to what I've already said?
I think you pretty much covered anything, but if you do have any additional questions, I will be happy to address them.
I will ask first for a motion for the tax levy. I will ask first for a motion for the tax levy. We have a motion by Alderman Inman, seconded by Alderman Colde Pietro for an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2018, for the City of Crestille, Will County, Illinois. Are there any questions or comments in regards to the motion?
I just have one question. When you said that we ranked 17th, and then you factor the rebate in, we're 12th. Are any of the other municipalities have rebates that would factor making them higher and affect that number?
I believe that Shorewood and New Lennox also give some type of rebate.
Because they could change the outcome, so I would just not want to give out maybe not quite true information. If they give rebates, maybe that affects the percentages and...
Right, they're all above number 12 also.
So...
New Lennox did have to carry it. The cans were for a couple of years. I think they went back and again now.
Pardon me?
I think New Lennox cans were for a couple of years rebate, and now they're back to the...
I'm not sure about that. I don't know. But we kept our word as a city council when we passed the referendum back in 2010. And we've given our residents back for five years now. And in March of this 2018 will be, I believe, the sixth year. Is it not? Fifth or sixth?
I believe it's the fifth year.
Fifth year, 2018 in March. Everybody will receive a rebate check again. Any other questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Minman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1764.
Okay, thank you. That is all of the agenda items for the mayor, but I do have a couple of comments. First, our city administrator, Heather McGuire, as everybody knows, welcomed a new son into the world on November 30th. And she has sent a thank you card to all the wonderful Crestille staff and elected officials. Thank you so much for the beautiful flowers. While I was in the hospital, the arrangement was beautiful and brightened the mood during my unexpectedly, unexpectedly long stay. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, Heather McGuire. So again, we'd like to congratulate Heather on the birth of her son and wish her and her new son good health. Also, I just wanted to piggyback on a couple of things that Tony said in regards to Gaylord and Division Street, the traffic lights. I went through there this morning about 11 o'clock. What a major improvement to that intersection, not only the widening of the street, the new pavement, the striping, but also the fact that the traffic lights were turned on in addition to the streetlights. So that is a major improvement for that intersection that will improve the flow of traffic along the Division Street and the Gaylord Street traffic pattern. Also, to the APWA awards that were, that we are going to receive in January in regards to the Viaduct. That Viaduct was neglected on Route 53 for 50-some years. There was always a dispute over who, who had ownership, the state, the city, the railroad. And all it came to was a lot of discussion. So when the money was available, that the city got, when CN bought the railroad from EJNE, the city council decided to make those improvements at that Viaduct, not only with the painting, but with the landscaping at the Viaduct. And I think it's been a major improvement for the Broadway Street area also. In regards to the Well 7 and environmental improvements that were made, again, I know everybody's not happy with it, but it's been a major improvement for that area also. The city does need to change. The city does need to grow, and the city does need to make some changes on city-owned property also that were neglected for many, many years. And those are the only things that I have in regards to my agenda items. So if there's any questions for the mayor, I would certainly try to entertain them.
I just want to thank you for that luncheon. It was very nice on Tuesday. It's a nice thing that you do for your, all the officials and for the employees and departments, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to City Clerk's report. Vicki Hackney, good evening, Vick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one item on the agenda this evening. Autumn Bridge Town Homeowners Association Board of Directors is requesting use of the council chambers for the following dates, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. for their 2018 association meetings. For the record, the first one is January 4th, February 1st, March 2nd, April 5th, May 3rd, June 7th, July 5th, August 2nd, September 6th, October 4th, and November 8th, 2018. The calendar has been checked, and these dates are available for that date and time. A motion would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sclaire, seconded by Alderman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the request? Roll call, please.
Tom Minman?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. That's all the agenda items I have. I will say that on Saturday, Amber Koresh with the Crestille Police Department and I attended Ries Across America. Very pleasantly, they had 18,500 Ries donated, which was 3,000 more than last year. The weather was wonderful. The turnout was unbelievable of everyone placing Ries. And it's, it's a very emotional and very wonderful thing to see from not only the young to the old, representing every community. So thank you to Amber. Thank you, Ed, for letting me have Amber for the day. She had a fever on top of it, so she wasn't feeling well, so she still attended. And on behalf of the Clerk's office, Merry Christmas to all our wonderful employees, staff, my office, council members, and your families. Thank you very much, and I hope you all have a wonderful holiday. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions of the clerk? Thanks, Vick.
Thank you.
Moving on, City Treasurer's report. Our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from November 27, 2017 through December 10 of 2017 in the amount of $198,353. Also, report regular payroll in terms of retro pay for our quarter between June 6th, or excuse me, June 26, 2017, and October 29, 2017, in the amount of $5,043.31. That's just informational. I do request your approval, however, on our list of bills, which total $649,368.83.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Marco Colde Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Minman?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any questions of the City Treasurer?
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business? We have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business? Anybody? Committee liaison reports? Anyone? City Council comments? These are positive city council comments. Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anybody like to go first this evening? We'll start with Alderman Gazal.
Oh, put me on the spot.
Sure did.
Well, I want to wish everyone in here, in the audience, to all the residents, city councils, city staff, a very blessed and Merry Christmas. Remember those, the wants and needs, and this is a time where we can reflect on everything that goes through our life and how blessed we are. Take the time and cherish and be thankful for what you have. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Sclaire?
I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, to our residents, family, friends, and a very Happy New Year also. Thank you.
Alderman Verche?
I'd like to congratulate all the participants in the house decorating contest and all the winners, and have you fine young ladies here, you watched the meeting go on tonight, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Dyke?
I'd just like to extend to everybody, council, staff, residents, anybody here, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever holiday that you celebrate at this time of year, and may y'all have a happy and healthy and prosperous New Year.
Word for Alderman Inman?
Thank you, Mayor. It's starting to sound like a broken record, but Merry Christmas to everybody. Share the love to our wonderful guests tonight, the Girl Scouts for coming out here. Ladies, we are proud of you and of what you do. And to all my fellow council members, I'd just like to say that one of the blessings I count the highest is the honor of serving in this community and this vision. Thank you.
Alderman Albert?
I wanted to congratulate all the contest winners tonight and also thank Mr. Siegel for, for the kind words that he has said about a lot of the organizations that he gave checks to this evening. You know, they work hard and donate their time, so we appreciate those kind words. And also, you know, Merry Christmas, but Happy New Year more so than anything, you know. 2017 has been a roller coaster of a year for me, so I appreciate all of the friendships that, that I've gained and, and, you know, the people that have been there for, for me and my family. So thank you. Merry Christmas.
Word for Alderman Colde Pietro?
On behalf of myself and my family, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Overland?
Well, I would also like to thank my little friends, the Girl Scouts and their leaders, for coming here tonight, and I hope you have a wonderful 2018. I want to thank all of the people who entered the Holiday Lights Contest again, and once again, the elves and Nate. So sorry you couldn't get a real prize, but great job. Your house looks gorgeous.
Thank you.
And I do want to wish all the residents and everybody here a very Merry Christmas. I like to say every year, whatever you celebrate, Happy Hanukkah, Feliz Navidad, Juve Noel, whatever it is, I hope it's very merry. Thank you.
Okay, that moves us along to public comment. If anyone would like to address city council, you need to come to the podium, need to state your name for the record. Your address is optional. I'm going to extend the opportunity to the junior Girl Scouts from Troop 71045. And let me say this, that as we talked about the way government works at this table, that you are going to see some very easy things and you are going to see some difficult decisions. And not everybody agrees. And that's all part of good government, to compromise and to meet in the middle. Okay? But I, I am going to vote on this one, okay? Because all of you young ladies have paid attention. You've been very respectful. You have shown great behavior while you've been sitting here for a little over an hour, and I know you got here at 6:15. So I vote, I vote that your troop leaders all give you, give all of you your government badges for being here tonight because I think that you did a fantastic job. So with that, now you've watched what we have done. You've asked me a lot of questions in my office. This is your opportunity to go to the podium. You need to state your name, and you, just your first name is good enough, okay? Your first name is good enough. You don't have to give us your address. If you have any questions for any of the council men or women that you would like to ask them on anything, I will give you that opportunity now.
One at a time, please.
Come on. Don't everybody rush. Okay, Mrs. Dean will start.
I'm Sarah Dean, and I'm a resident of Heritage Lake Estates. So I just want to say thank you that the light actually got turned on because I know at a previous council meeting, you guys had mentioned that you weren't turning it on until the spring. So we were a little nervous with that. But with that being said, the trucks drive on that street, on Division, usually around 60. And so we're very nervous for car accidents, and now that the light is on, there's no longer stop for them. They have a thoroughway sometimes for that. So we just would like a little more vigilance on that street. It's only 35, and they are a nightmare. So needless to say, we are, you know, the safety of us is really important, and I don't know if Division going west is your territory or not. So that's something that I definitely need to address, but it's definitely something that makes us nervous as residents there.
West of Gaylord Road is City of Joliet.
Okay.
But I will tell you that our police department is vigilantly out there, monitoring the speed of all the traffic on Division and Gaylord.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay?
Many trucks go very fast, just FYI. I've sent many pictures to many trucking companies as well.
Okay.
Don't, I just don't want anyone to get hurt, and myself included, so.
Neither do we.
But I appreciate the light and it being turned on, so that's going to make a lot less...
The weather cooperated us, with us in December, so that was a priority that we wanted to do.
I appreciate it.
Young ladies, anybody? Come on, somebody's got a question.
Oh, we got one. We got it.
I'm Stephanie.
Pull the speaker down. Grab it, pull it down.
I'm Stephanie. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Well, thank you, Stephanie.
Well, Mayor, I have, I have one thing, too.
One more.
When she's done.
Hi, I'm Caitlin, and I'm happy holidays.
Thank you. Anybody else? We, we certainly want to wish all of you a very blessed Merry Christmas. I hope you get everything that you wished for from Santa. And also want to wish all of you and all of our residents and everybody a healthy and Happy New Year for 2018. Glenn, Vick?
Yeah, and Stephanie and Caitlin, since you were so wonderful to come up, we would appreciate your help serving Punch and Cookies after the meeting. And then all the cookies that you can eat. How's that for an exchange? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to come to the podium? You need to state your name for the record. Your address is optional. There is none, there is a need for an executive session for litigation, correct, to our city attorney? Pending litigation? So we, we're going to take a motion here to go into executive session, but maybe what we'll do is we'll make a motion to go into executive session and maybe, are the cookies ready out there?
Yes, they are.
You, you ladies are more than welcome to go out there and help yourself to some cookies and punch. You know, when we do come back, there will be no further business before us. So this is, we, we may be a little bit lengthy in executive session, so you're more than welcome to help yourself to some of the cookies and punch out there. And we will be back as soon as, as we can. But you certainly, I know you have school tomorrow, correct? And I'm sure that it's been a long night for you, so we'll leave the choice up to you,